Yes, right?
Yep.
Our City Commission meeting order July 2nd, 2007. Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Here.
Shran.
Here.
I'm Neil. Neil.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Here.
Sorry.
Here.
We have form, thank you. Our invocation tonight by our good friend Reverend Larry Sparks from New Beginnings Church. All who wish to, please rise.
I think we can quit praying for rain. I remember being in this very room on more than one occasion as we petitioned and asked the Lord to send rain, and he has done so. The ponds are overflowing, and the lake is coming up. Just acknowledge that that's a true prayer. Thank you, Lord. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we're very cognizant that over two centuries ago, a group of patriots met in a room, and they took a challenge, and they took it seriously. And because of that, we have freedoms today. We're not colonies, we're states. Not just states, United States. And freedom that others may not enjoy around this earth, we do. Freedom to petition, freedom to pray, freedom to laugh, freedom to participate in government. And we're thankful for that freedom. We are thankful for the rain. And, Lord, we do recognize that you're in control of the weather. We don't always understand. But you ask us to pray, and now we're going to give thanks. Thank you, Lord. Now, Lord, if you want to back it off just a little bit, that would be all right, too. Thank you, Father, for loving us so much, and thank you for the good leadership you've provided here in the city of Shawnee. On the commission, the mayor, the vice mayor, the chief of police, the soon will know there'll be a new fire chief. And, Lord, you have everything I know in the wisdom of these people to provide for every need, and we're grateful for them, too. We pray this prayer, "Not doubting, but believing," in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, intention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate it. Okay, number one, consider approval of agenda. We approve. Motion by Commissioner Doherty.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Peterson. Call roll, please.
Doherty.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Shran.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Two, consider approval of consent agenda. We have one eye and soul. David?
Yeah, I need to pull K-3.
K-3, okay.
I'd like to pull D-1 and 3, and G.
D-1 and 3, and G.
And G.
Okay. Anything else?
Move to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doherty. Call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Let's just go down the list here, starting with D-1.
This is the contract with the school district, and the last paragraph, number 7, just doesn't make sense to me, is one issue. It says, "This agreement shall be administered by the city manager of the city and the superintendent of the school, having the authority to deal with the city and the city manager with regard to the superintendent of the school."
With regard to the superintendent?
I don't understand that. And then it's signed by the city manager, and it looks like the president of the school board instead of the superintendent. Okay, okay. I'm sorry, what? Is there... She said the school board president always signs this one.
Oh, she talked back.
This 7, is that like some kind of standard language that's... Can you explain that to me? Having the authority to deal with the city and the city manager with regard to the superintendent of the school?
It looks like without a period there, that it's something kind of...
Uh-huh.
And this is an old contract also, so...
When's... John, when's the last time you reviewed the contract? I mean, you just said it was an old one.
It was been a year ago, June of last year.
Is this something you think you need to review before we approve it? Yeah, we need to... Well, I mean, the body of it, the rest of it, without just clarifying that. Just to make sure.
No, not as long as the commission is still of a mind. You want to go ahead and continue that maintenance now.
Well... But even in... But let's look, even in paragraph 1, it talks about July 1, 2006, to June 30, 2007, is the period of the contract.
Right, this is here-to-year contract. So, this is the one, this is not the one that we're going to assign tonight. But if a volume change, we do debate on it unless you change the focus.
So what it's saying is approve the renewal...
Right.
...of these for the upcoming... I would just... Maybe you can find out what paragraph 7, what the completion of paragraph 7 is, and put it in our next agenda?
I think that just, all that, if I remember correctly, going back to when we had the original discussion years ago, I missed, they wanted the city manager and school superintendent to kind of be an ad hoc committee. If there's any dispute over the contract, those two parties would get together first and see if they could work it out, rather than have to put a lawsuit side over it.
So then it should say, "Having the authority to deal..."
Right.
"...with something..."
The manager of the city and the superintendent of the school.
Right, right. So it's leaving some things out here. Okay.
It's interesting that when you start reading the paragraphs about that the school and the city must call on the other to do assistance to maintenance of courts and things. And I guess that language is in there for legality with the... For the interlocal cooperation, although it seems to be kind of a long way street. I don't know that we've ever called on the school to help us with our tennis courts, huh?
Again, getting back to Commissioner Stevens, maybe you all understand?
Yeah.
Well, this is the contract that actually laid out what some of the relationship is. Some of the other ones didn't lay it out for us, well, but...
Right. It's just old, probably fine.
I think we ought to look at an updated one. If we're going to enter into a new contract, we need to do something that's current and feasible for today, not something from a year ago, or five years ago, or 10 years ago. If we're doing it, let's do it right, and make sure it's complete.
Yeah. Well, the bottom line is, you know, whether the attorney general would approve such an interlocal agreement if there wasn't reciprocal work or investment on his side. If there isn't, I don't think they probably would, but... So maybe time to ask the school to help us with some tennis courts.
Absolutely.
Or with the right one, even.
Can I make a motion to defer this until the next meeting?
I think that's a good idea. Got a motion by Vice Mayor Peterson to defer to the next meeting?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Other discussion? Call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. D-3.
Throughout this agreement, it talks about the superintendent being her, and that needs to be probably a him slash her. So it can be used even if they change, but this dates this contract, definitely. So just, I think that wording needs to be updated. And I would make the motion to approve it with that, with the wording change. Right.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Other discussion? Call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, G.
Okay, a couple of things in this one. This is the one with SECDA. On paragraph number 2, it says that the, you know, the city will allow up to 10 of its employees, it says while working, these employees will be under the day-to-day direction of the operations manager of the SECDA. My understanding is that's probably Donna, and I just want to make sure that title is correct, because I have another question of a title in here later on.
She says yes.
Yes, okay. That one's okay. In number 8, it says, "This contract will be administered by both the city manager and the general manager of the trust estate of the SECDA." I didn't know we had that person anymore.
I think that title changed, didn't it?
I think so. And so, it looks like...
Should be what, operations manager?
Well, it looks like the, and correct me if I'm wrong, John Cannavan, that this should be administered between, well, it's signed by the chairman of the SECDA board. So I don't know if that's what it needs to say, or if it needs to say operations manager.
Well, that's going to be up to the parties who they want to have. I would say the operations manager, do the day-to-day work on it, probably have more ability to deal with the contract as opposed to the chairman, probably operating on it.
Okay, so this should say then operations manager?
Yeah.
We think?
That's probably what you want, but I'm not sure it's saying you can't have it the other way.
Because we don't, we no longer have the general manager, we have a marketing manager and staff.
Right, right.
Who authored the agreement? The attorneys or the board? They're both. Did Mike, does Mike get on this?
Did Mike do this?
And I think the intent at the time it was written was for it to be...
Mike, your phone.
...an agreement, and the reason it was listed as the manager of the trust, the general manager, and the city manager was so it was a negotiation between the commission and the board. It was two individuals rather than two boards.
Oh, okay.
Now, since that time, we don't have a general manager, and they've done away with the position. So whether or not they want to appoint someone else as the general manager to do that, or change the wording of the contract. And we missed that when we went through it, because it was a formality, change the dates.
Okay, okay.
So we may want to look into that and maybe come to some agreement with the trust authority before you...
I think we're going to need to have that recommendation, because it looks like we're trying to have an agreement between the city staff and the authority staff. And if it's the operations manager, that may not be what the intent is.
We were trying to do to the separation by me being a city employee, and that was the reason. We changed it to the general manager of the trust.
Okay.
So it wasn't a city employee that was doing the negotiating before the board.
Okay.
So we may need to have them revisit this before your approval.
You know, I was at this last meeting. This didn't come up between, for the authority, did it?
Yes.
It did?
No, actually, it was the meeting before last. Mike wasn't there.
Okay.
And then he got us a copy. We approved it at the meeting before last in May, because we were trying to get it to you guys before the end of the year. But the agreement just said, "Change the dates on the contract, otherwise everything stays the same."
Okay.
It was an oversight in the wording.
Okay, stay there. I have one more question, then. And I'm going to go between paragraph number 2 and paragraph number 6. The last sentence of paragraph 2 says, "The cost of the city employees will be attributable to the funds budgeted to the SECDA by the city." And I don't know if that statement needs to be in there, because I don't think we ever directed where the, what the funds had to pay for. That's my comment on that. The third sentence in number 6 says, "The annual contribution will be in addition to the funds expended by the city for the salaries and benefits of the city employees working for the SECDA." That sounds like a contradiction. So my recommendation would be to strike both of them, but...
I think there was a time, if you remember back to discussions when we were having that rough summer discussing this, again, I'm trying to think back here, coming from the SECDA side on this. I think what the reason that those two were separated out like that was because you want, I think the city commission wanted to make it clear that this is how much we're due to the trust, being these employees that we're picking up the cost for, and then we're making annual contribution on top of that. And I think that was, I think that's where that really ended.
Their salaries get paid out of the contribution that we...
Well, I understand that. I think that's what they agreed, they did it twice, to make sure you were highlighting that. Now, again, it's redundant, if you're right. I don't know if I dropped hope there. Go ahead and drop us the one up.
The cost of the employees will be attributable to the funds.
I thought you'd go ahead and drop the last line, 2, as opposed to the middle line, 6.
Except the annual contribution will be in addition to the funds expended by the city for the salaries.
But you cap it at whatever amount that you budget for the SECDA. Whatever's left over after any salaries and all the rollups that go with the city employee positions.
Can be spent. I mean...
So that'll be flexible both directions.
They want to spend it on other things up to that cap, that's perfectly okay. If they want to make do with eight employees instead of 10, that's okay.
Right. And whatever monies are left over after all the benefits for the employees are paid out, then that's the amount they have to spend.
Do you think that's, that's the intention of number 6?
Oh, 6?
Kind of?
Yes, yes. That the rest of those funds will not be earmarked, only the amount for the employees.
Okay.
And anything else above that amount up to the cap that they're on it is what they have to spend.
Does anybody else not see, or it's not clear?
I understand your intent.
It's, the language of it just isn't clear.
Concise.
Yeah, it's... Well, if we're having to clarify who the general manager of the trust is now, as far as enacting this, maybe Mr. Clover can help with clarification of this. Yeah, let's do that. As far as like, hey, look, clarify, you know, what the money's being used for, and this language isn't working. Right. I don't want language in here that specifies what they have to use the money for, if that's not our intent. And then I don't want it to be contradictory. You're right. Okay, so then I'd make a motion to defer this and bring this back next time?
Next time.
Yeah, right. Just for clarification on some of these details as we update these contracts.
So do you want to have it, what kind of wording, when I speak with Mike, it's been heavy line, the, just separate that out as far as the salaries of the employees, and then perhaps just a total separate amount? Problem being, we don't know what the salaries of the employees will be.
We don't want a dollar amount.
Right.
We want to say, "We're giving you money..." The annual contribution. "...and out of that money, you pay the salaries and the benefits for the employees that you actually have, and we're not telling you how much to pay them."
But we won't.
"But you're going to pay their salaries and the benefits out of this pool of money, and anything that's left over, you all can do with it what you want."
That's what we're doing now. We're sitting...
Right, but that's not what these provisions seem to indicate. Right.
Clean it up a little bit, so that's clear.
And if I think about it, I'll call Mike by the warning, and just kind of tell him what we were talking about and the confusion and...
Well, there's a lot of confusion there.
Yeah, you understand. Okay, okay. That's right. It's like, that's right. You get, yeah, you get money, and we expect you to pay your people. That's right. Okay.
So you're making a motion to defer?
Yes, I am.
To the next meeting?
Yes, I am.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Call roll, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, finally, to K-3.
We have a request for a speed limit sign on Penny, and it looks like there were three eyes and three abstains. So, kind of talk, does anybody have any objections to a speed limit sign being on Penny?
I have information on that, that Carl Holt had called me about. There were six people there. He was told, since he had asked to put it on the agenda, that he would have to abstain from a vote. This being, and I talked to John, I talked to Tracy, and determined that he really didn't have to abstain on that, just because, like us, bringing forward something on an advisory board agenda. There are a little new, a lot of new people there, and they probably staff is maybe not lining them out like they ought to. But basically, one of the people that voted abstain of the other two, I mean, he would have voted yes, which would make it 4-2. One abstained said they didn't think that we should put a sign up, because no one pays attention to them. So, you know, that's kind of interesting. I know we've heard that a few times. This kind of relates to one of the discussions we get into when we get into the speed pump policy. You can take a bunch of signs down a neighborhood when you put up speed pumps, because they won't drive fast, I guarantee. You'll lose the bottom of your car. So, but he had asked that, and I didn't want to restrict the traffic commissioners, all of them, from bringing something forward for suggestion, and they having to abstain for some reason. It's not like they're going to have any personal gain out of this, so... Anyway, I think there's a little confusion on this, and I have driven down the street. It's a nice, wide street. People have a tendency to come off a keg of food and just kind of keep it going, you know? So I don't have a problem with it, after taking a look at it and talking to him, seeing the confusion that was there.
Penny Street's where, that's residential?
Right.
Houses on both sides of the street?
Right.
I thought there was a set speed limit in residential areas in the city.
There is.
It is, it's not, it's not, right.
Some are posted, some are not.
Not posted, yeah.
They don't post any of them, because it's supposed to be known, it's what, 25 miles an hour?
Well, or 30 supposedly, right.
30.
And where are those signs located?
I've never seen one.
And it's virtually a collector's.
And it's, yeah, it's a bigger residential.
It's not inside, it's where everybody goes in, because it goes all the way at the back and...
It's a collector.
Like 39th and Dollar Street comes around, and so it's more of a collector's street than in a residential area, so...
And it's an easy street to go down and not pay attention.
Yeah. So, so you're...
That I would move we approve to install a speed limit sign on Penny Street.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Doherty.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Other discussion?
No.
Call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, citizens' participation.
Oh, did I miss that? I'm sorry, I missed the mayor's appointments. No, I did that. I had proclamation afterwards, yeah. Point for sir. Part of the, you're confusing me. Okay. Give your name and sign your name in there, and...
James Graham. I live at 37th Street in Shawnee. I've been flooded out 14 times in the last 12 years, and I represent the three people that live behind me on Severn Street here, and the gentleman back here behind me on Ayers. And in this last flood that we had this year, I went to the city twice, asking them to clean out the drains after the first flood, after the second flood. I ended up cleaning out the drains myself before the third flood. This last drain has been the biggest drain that we've had in 12 years, and that's kind of granted. But as a matter of course, I had to put plastic over a double door in my basement, and it still came up to a quarter inch below this wall, which is 24 inches high. It was running 37, 32 and 1/2 inches deep on the outside of my garage wall. This is the backside of that garage, right here, where the orange door is here. You see that the flotsam mark is a center block and a half high above the step of the door, and it's two steps up on that. It flooded my garage 14 inches deep. I built cabinets, and it ruined $1,100 worth of wood that I had pre-cut and ready to go. It came up on the backside of my house, up underneath here, to eight inches on the backside of this window. It has a 30-inch mark on the side of my fence. The problem, gentlemen, is a culvert about three foot in diameter that plugs. It lies at the back of my lot, and I think for interim measure, if we were able to widen that and bring it up to the backside of my garage, it would give an extra area to overflow. It looked like a lake in my backyard, and all the way over here to the rabbit hutch, two inches below this, it's up on a center block and has another eight inches above that. The water was all the way over here on this last flood. My neighbors behind me, the gentleman right here, his name is Mr. Percival, he moved in a month and a half ago. First thing he did was repair his fences, trim his trees, and make his lawn look nice, and paint the place. This is his backyard, and the water flowing under the fence on floods on the 26th. It was flowing 24 inches on the backside of his house, and 18 inches over here by his, or 14 inches over here at his deck, and coming out from underneath his section. The lady next, he's 76 years old. The lady next to him is 71 years old. Her name is Melba Robinson. She's played piano in almost every church here in Shawnee, and graduated at OB-U. It shifted her portable building off of its concrete blocks, and the first flood that we had caught her portable building and ruined a lot of her pictures and Christmas ornaments. Here you see a fence shoved over at a 45-degree angle. The flotsam goes all the way to the top of the fence. The lady next to her, on the backside of that fence, they share a fence with a lady named Kim. Kim is going through, has not worked in 15 months, because she's gone through stage 4 chemo. And at the time that I cleaned out the ditch, it smelled of raw sewage, and it carried a lot of sewage and stuff up into the yards. And the gentleman behind me, in the, back behind this direction, the others live on this side, the gentleman back behind me on Ayers, his backyard floods when mine does. For the majority of the floods, it tends to be ones where you get like a three-day saturation, and then a heavy rain. But I think widening that culvert would be something that, until they can widen, until they can widen the opening, taking out some of that dirt and giving a little extra volume for the water to flow, might be a good solution for temporary, until such time as they could widen it. Any questions?
Got all the guys here that need to hear that, so, and they know we've heard it now.
Okay. Thank you.
We will look into it. John, is that you, or is that Jim in it? Jim? No, John? They're all... They're putting their fingers down.
They're up for a song, Warren.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any others? Okay, Scott?
My name is Scott Warren, and I live out in Willowbrook. And I would like to take a minute or two to talk about sports complex and soccer opportunities out there. I've been here quite a few times over the years discussing this, and I'm very eager to talk about it as long as we would like to. One thing I'd like to make you aware of is the current regional soccer tournament that's currently going on in the Moore Soccer Complex that was recently completed, probably a year and a half, two years ago. It is a 12-state region. It involves well over 100 teams in ages from, I believe, under 13 up to under 19. It is the state champions in that age group in those states. It's now in Moore, it'll be, it's still running now, it started, I believe, Friday. It'll run through Wednesday, and it is an unbelievable thing to see. They have 16 fields, all full-size fields, a fourth of them are lit. They built that specifically for soccer only. It's not a suggestion. It's what they chose to do. It's not a suggestion, it's what they chose to do. They are running 16 fields from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. They can run in two-hour segments by age group. It is an unbelievable thing to see. It's kind of muddy right now and they have been able to play. Something else, there was an interesting editorial piece in the New Star Sunday, got me motivated again. If, and I guess really the reason that I'm here is there's been several commissioners that I've met with, there's some that I've not met with. If there is anything that I can do to answer some questions or to meet individually or in a small group, whatever the setting you would like, to discuss what we've been working on and that involves soccer at Sports Complex, what we've been talking about over the years, what we can see. I've said before, if you build it, we'll come. That couldn't be more true. We were interested in fields at the old airport, we're interested in fields at the current site that's being discussed and reviewed. We need fields. We have 400 kids that signed up this spring. We'll probably have that many or more that'll be signing up now. The season will start, practicing will start in August. The games will start the first week of September, that can run into first week in December. Hopefully we can keep that from happening, it gets kind of cold. That is, that's sort of where we're at with it. Like I said, we will be happy to visit at any time, anyone from the association. If you have any questions now or in the future, I'd be happy to give you my cell number or email. Are there any questions at the moment? I feel that we're really, we're really getting close on this. I just, I just really feel that we're getting close. Let me know if I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Scott, you have been instrumental in helping us pursue some of the potential tourism money, so I appreciate that, staying on some of the higher elected officials that may be able to help us. Other citizens' participation? Okay, do a proclamation. We've been, made you wait this whole time to recognize you. Appreciate you kind of nice. I know that some of you grew up here and remember going to the Hornbeck for, with a can of food and you got in free and, was that Thanksgiving? It's been a long time.
Yes.
Thanksgiving or Christmas, I couldn't remember one of those two, but that was a highlight of, I know, my childhood and being able to ride my bicycle down with a can of food and see a free movie and that was a big deal then, you know, before we had internet and cable and all those other things. So, next Tuesday at 6:30, the doors open and at 7 o'clock, we're going to have a special presentation. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'm going to do everything I can to be there. I think it's a special day for the city of Shawnee, July the 10th, which will be officially Hornbeck Theater Day in the city of Shawnee. Whereas this year marks the 60th anniversary of the Hornbeck Theater in our city and continues today as a twin theater. Several celebrities have appeared at the theater, including Gene Autry and Dale Robertson. And whereas the theater is still owned by Jones Theaters, through the years, the Hornbeck Theater has provided steady and gainful employment to many of our residents, thus contributing to the area's economy and has been an important factor in the continued vitality of the downtown business district. And whereas, the Hornbeck Theater was added to the National Register of Historical Places in the year 2000. And whereas, special activities have been planned to celebrate the occasion of this anniversary and it is fitting that we should join in this expression of our pride and appreciation for the many civic and economic benefits that our community has enjoyed over the years because of the growth and prosperity of locally owned and managed businesses such as the Hornbeck Theater. Now therefore, I Chuck Mills, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim July 10th, 2007, as Hornbeck Theater Day in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, dated the 2nd day of July 2007. Give her a picture of her so we can be in the, oh, he's quick.
Thank you. You know, I'd forgotten about Dale Robertson. I was a senior in high school and I was his chauffeur that day. So, he was in dangerous hands that day. Thank you very much. This means very, a whole lot to me, more than you understand. I hope that everybody will try to come that evening. The festivities begin at 7 o'clock, the doors do open at 6:30. Everybody who's grown up in Shawnee has some sort of memory of the Hornbeck and I know I do because I grew up at the Hornbeck. But I want you to know that I'm a strong believer in downtown and I hope that the Hornbeck will continue to be an important part of downtown, at least as long as I'm around. And I thank you very much for this. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ronnie, appreciate it. Okay, number five, consider a resolution directing the rebate of the increase in the amount of water tap fees and water meter fees that occurred within, with the passage of ordinance number 2289 NS. Staff?
Just a quick and dirty explanation. In November, we increased the cap fees for both sewer and water from the old fee, which was $100 for sewer, $150 for water. That was regardless of size of the meter. So, Walmart would pay $250 or if I'm building a thousand-square-foot house, I pay $250. The new fee was to try and bring that into, I guess, bring it into scale. We issued around, right at around 135 permits to date during that time period to 23 different developers, which you have a list in your packet. The statement that I made at the last meeting was a previous number of $8,000. It's a little higher than that, it's almost $31,000. We've had a lot of activity in the last three, four months since the last time we ran the numbers. But the range was from anywhere from 125, as far as if you were to refund the money, which the difference there would be a $150 water bill or water tap fee and then the fee was 275. So, that's the $125. Basically, it was an irrigation meter to accumulation of $9,500 being the highest. So, with that, I open it up to any questions or if you have any comments, be happy trying to answer. We have talked about how the, any refunds, once, we have held off on entering anything into the system because until you take action, I didn't want to have to duplicate our efforts. If you said, no, wait a second, $31,000 is too much, or we're going to rebate half, we're going to have to enter each individual amount in every single permit. So, it's going to take a little bit of time, you know, in addition to taking all of our normal activities as far as actions coming in. So, obviously, I didn't want to do it twice.
You're going to refund to the people that applied for the permit?
That was the direction you gave us at the last time.
Just making sure. Okay.
Or the people that paid, the people that issued the permit?
Right, the individual that pulled the permit.
Okay.
And I know that we talked about trying to, I mean, we still have to bring, this still has to be increased and we've got to, it is a revenue generator for SMA and we're, we ought to have at least some commercial rates in here and I'm sure there haven't been increases like a lot of times, a lot of times we've dealt with no increases for a long period of time. Where, are we going to bring someone in, like a consultant that's going to do that? Are we going to do the research? How, what's the plan there roughly?
Email I received from Jim Beard, and you can speak to it if you'd like, is that we're looking for outside firms to help us evaluate our costs of doing business and trying to establish that fee. The wording was both for a, you know, the rate study and for an impact fee. So, you probably will see both coming back at some time in the future. The impact fee being a little different from what we're talking about here. This was actually going into the general fund and going into the SMA as just revenue items. An impact fee will go into a long-range capital account, say to expand the water treatment plant.
Right.
Or to enlarge a specific water, you know, water line or sewer line, you know, large capital expenses as growth occurs.
Be projecting like some regular business would, or replacement cost of growth? That's amazing.
Hey, we're catching up.
Well, and I think part of the problem here was that the fee was enacted.
Right.
And later upon reflection, it just appeared to be an arbitrary dollar amount.
Right.
And so, in order to truly justify our actions, we're going to have to go back and have these studies and justify an increase based upon a true cost analysis and in turn an impact fee because there was a little bit of discord and disagreement as to what the intent was of this. So, this is just strictly for clarification and to make sure that we are doing what's right.
Well, the information came from surrounding cities and some of our 16 target cities. That's where most of that information came from as far as, you know, what is everybody else doing? That was kind of the down and dirty way to do it, I think, and, you know.
I'm not for sure that's what city staff said, that those numbers came from.
That's what I was told. I mean, that's my understanding.
Upon reflection, there are no numbers to back it up. So, that's kind of where we're at. It was just, we don't know how we came up with this, we just did and here we are.
Of course, the person that did it didn't hear, so.
Exactly.
Jim, do you have the records that Osama used?
Nope.
Prior to giving us a report?
We can always look for, the only records that I can find are presentations that she did as far as actual, or something like that.
Timmy, from one of the meetings, the comment was made that those records were given to the former city treasurer and finance director and those records are nowhere to be found. People looked for them and so there was no way to validate the dollar amounts that were in place. So, we just had, we didn't have anything.
So, we've got to start from scratch.
So, we've got to start from scratch. That's the only right thing to do. And we talked about, we talked about some of this being an impact fee. Some of the increase in cost was an impact fee, but no arrangements were made in the accounting system to allow those funds to go in there for long-term capital improvements. So...
So, let's make it right. Somebody make a motion here and we'll run on.
Make a motion to approve the resolution. Cause it read. Directing the rebate of the increase of the tap fees and water fees.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson. Second by Commissioner Stevens. Read the title, please.
Resolution directing rebate of the water tap fees and water meter fees and after adoption of ordinance number 2289 NS to those rates in existence prior to adoption.
Call roll, please.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Shran.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, number six, consider authorizing emergency replacement of sewer line on Dewey Street between Hobson and the Sincole, I mean, and Broadway Streets between Park and Market Streets and Persuance to 61 OS 130.
Did you repeat that?
That was a slip.
This sewer line is down for three blocks in various locations. The streets caved in and a couple of places, we're having to pump out of two different places. It's a mess. And we've got people that are having sewer problems because of it and basements and that kind of, that kind of a mess. So, we need to start on it yesterday. We've got some prices from three different contractors. Jordan Contractors, $109,880. Urban Contractors, $124,800. Craft Reynolds, $178,324. We have $50,000 in pipe bursting. We have $25,000 in manhole rehab, which $6,000 of that is the manholes that fell apart too. And we have some money in private sewer line replacement. So, we can do some rearranging, reprioritizing and get the money if we have to put a project off or whatever, but this is, we've got to do it.
Hopefully, we can be reimbursed. We met with Congresswoman Mary Fallon today and we'll be applying for emergency aid and some of that will be for infrastructure. Don will give us more information on that later, but hopefully, we can recoup some of those dollars so you can go back and spend them what we budgeted for instead of these emergencies.
This is the 16-foot line, that's 16-foot down from the surface?
Yeah, anywhere from 13 to 15.
Okay.
Okay. Really thank you, much choice.
Yeah.
So, I would move we authorize emergency replacement of the sewer line on Dewey Street. Motion by Commissioner Doherty?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shran. Call roll, please.
Doherty?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Seven, discuss and consider method and options to remove city from involvement in leases on school land commission property at Shawnee Twin Lakes. Staff?
This is basically answering some of the questions that you specifically had, Mayor, as to when some of the leases would be coming due. The 2007, actually, the reason that that number is so high is because there are some leases from 2005 and 2006 that have not been renewed for various reasons. You know, we had a moratorium for six months. I mean, there are some things in there that, that has delayed it. So, in looking at it, you had asked, if we go to a three-year lease, you could have all but three out of the 28 leases will be renewed in that three-year period. And we have already been receiving requests to go off of the city lease and deal directly with the school land commission. So, we might be able to approach those three individuals and just say, would you be willing to move your lease to a three-year lease and fall within that 2010 timeframe? And then, in three years, you could reevaluate the situation.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Your recommendation is?
Well, you've already renewed the lease. You were asking as far as the ordinance and changing over those other leases to three-year leases.
To try to get out of this deal and let them go direct.
Is your intent for the '07 ones to be three-year leases and then the '08 ones to be two-year leases and then the '09 to be a one-year lease so that everybody is up for renewal in 2010?
Yes, ma'am. That was the discussion from the last meeting.
Right.
So, in 2010, you'd only have three leases out of the 28 that were still under the five year, but, you know, I think by that time, we might, you know, have quite a few people who want to go ahead and do the three-year lease.
Two at the end.
Excuse me?
You keep saying three. I don't see what three.
Well, one is in October, you know, you're, we're talking June right now of '07. So, a three-year lease would be June of 2010 and October of 10 and January and March of 12 would be the three.
So, does the 2012 come back because you haven't renewed anybody for a couple of years and if it's a five-year lease?
We just renewed it earlier this year.
But you didn't renew a bunch of those from 15 that you're saying hadn't been renewed in '03 and '04 or whatever.
Correct. You know, there are some that either didn't have anything, you know, it may not have had anything on it, you know, it may not have had anything on the property, you know, which, you know, there's no septic tank, there were delays as far as the moratorium. We've had some, you know, there have been some issues.
CF5 then, the three in 10 and the two in 12 that you need to bring back to agree to go.
The two and 12, they're on a five year.
Well, the reason I said three instead of the five is that you have two, one that will be up in March of 2010 and one that would be up in May of 2010 that by the time you sign the agreement with the state school land commission in May or June of 2010, those will be renewed, you know, you just automatically put those, so you go straight to the school land commission.
Okay.
So, really, you're only talking about the three, the one that was, that would be up in October and then the two in 2012.
I'm with you now.
Okay, yeah, I just...
The bottom line is the leaseholders, these 28 leaseholders are going to be paying the same amount with the increases, but they're going to be paying them to the state, not the city.
Yes, sir.
That's basically it.
You'd have the same oversight as far as the, you wouldn't have the annual inspections, but it would be a, just, we'd go out, anytime that there's construction occurring.
We would control it.
Just normal code enforcement.
Right, this is if that was a house in Windmill Ridge.
Right.
And this one affect the city's five-year leases in any way on the other property around the lake?
No, this is just on...
Just on the school land, north and south.
Now, is there the potential risk for these people, for the school land people to come back and really increase? back and really increase their rates?
The.
I mean, could they come in and say, "All of a sudden, now we want $3,000 a year for this land"?
The, there is a basis as far as, you know, they have to go out and look at the true market value. And the discussion that I had with the school land commission is that, you know, right now, our current lease that we have entered into is 660 a year per lot. The answer was, "That is a good deal. You're probably in three years going to see upwards of 1,500 to 2,000 dollars."
So by us cutting ourselves out as the middleman, we're placing these people, these 28 people, at a potential risk of paying a considerable amount of money more than what they're paying now?
It's going to happen either way because even if we're a pass-through, you might protect them for a little while, but it's going to get passed through. It's going to go up.
Well, that's my question. I mean, are we expecting that to go up in the future?
I would expect it to go up in the future, yes. All indications that have been given to me, whether we are leasing it from the school land commission or they would be leasing it. I will state that I spoke to Mr. Coolman a week or so ago, and he had indicated that they will be dealing directly with each individual leaseholder. If they choose not to lease, then they would be going out. Those vacant lots that we're showing here, they will be also looking at every single parcel or area around the lake that could be developed. So, you know, there would be more than just those 28. You know, that's the other, other negative as far as we will be seeing an increase in, you know.
Not like we're making any money on it anyway, though.
Now, wait a minute. Wait a minute. The negative is that we may see an increase in development at the lake?
Yes, ma'am.
How is that negative?
You passed an ordinance or you agreed, I don't know if it was necessary an ordinance, not to increase development at the lake, you know, back in November, you know.
On the land we own.
Right. The position was that there would be no new development. Those that are leased currently would continue to be leased, but those that were undeveloped or unplatted, unlaid out tracks would not be leased.
Okay, so how does that affect these here?
28.
Would not affect the 28. Would affect anything that does not have an arrow to it.
Right, which means those can be developed.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe.
You have area here that could possibly be developed.
Okay. Because that's not impacted by the ordinance that we passed.
No, ma'am. No, I'm just saying that there could be in three years. They are going to identify tracks whether they are laid out or not. This area here could be developed.
So are you saying that development on these lots is negative?
The, increasing the number of lots will increase your runoff. It will also increase, you know, you're going to have septic systems, you're going to have other things on those properties that could potentially have a, you know, be a hazard to the water source. We're, at Grand Lake, just to give you an example, Grand Lake, if, there was a study that was done that basically said, "We're going to allow full development of the lake." Now, the, now the public is coming out saying, "Whoa, wait a second. Now we're looking at all the environmental hazards that could be associated with full development around the lake." And nationally, you know, they're looking, that is an issue. Here, I can't tell you exactly what the impact would be.
Because we haven't had a study out there to say that development on these lots is going to negatively impact the water source. That's just a speculation.
For, on my part, you know, what I've been told by people who are more expert than I am have said that it, that it does have an impact, but I do not have any numbers or I can't state specifically.
Even though this is not truly the topic that we're discussing right now, are you saying that if the 28 leaseholders worked directly with the school land commission, that the city is left out of the loop now too and the school land commission can do with that area as they wish, which may go against a current ordinance that we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You're, the ordinance or, you know, I can't remember exactly what it was back in November when we came up with it, but it said that any of the currently vacant tracks would not be developed that are unleashed, you know.
Unleased, not undeveloped.
Correct.
Unleased.
Undeveloped, unleashed would not, would not be developed.
So that means all these empty ones are turned back over to the school land commission to do with as they please, and if someone comes in and says, "Hey, I have this piece of land, I want this piece of land, I want to develop it," as long as they can abide by the building code, they're good to go, right?
Zoning and the building code.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's this area here, right. I mean, there are some tracks that could be laid out that are not identified. Now, I'm just pointing out that there, you know, it's not just, "We're going to wash our hands of it." There could be some other things because conversations I've had with Mr. Coolman for the last few years, he's all, he's asked, "Hey, can we identify one of these tracks that's, you know, labeled as undevelopable and put it out on the free market and see what it could auction for and we'll determine what the market rate is?" And then that would dictate what the leases would be. You know, so, I mean, there are some things, it probably will not look just 28 lots. I almost guarantee you that.
Okay.
Good. So are we ready for a motion?
Regardless of what the, the future is for whether the city is the middleman or not, I think it's the right thing to do to put these leases on the same cycle as our current lease with the school land commission and so that at a certain point in time, we can make a decision to change it if we like or not, but that everybody will be on the same track when we do that. With that said, do I need to, do we need to have a motion about how this is done? Because this says, I mean, if it just says staff recommendation, this is a little confusing. It says that everything will be converted to a three-year lease, but some of them won't be three-year leases until we get, I mean, as we get closer to 2010, they might be a two-year lease, they might be a one-year lease, so that we can draw a line and go back to three-year.
Ultimate expiration of 2010.
Right, and then we can go back to like a three-year lease for some of these people or something. Okay. So I'll make a motion that these leased lots that are currently on the school land property will be renewed at a rate so that they can expire on the year 210. Is that all I need to say? Do I need to say anything about those last two out there? They'll just have to pick up the next cycle unless they recommend something. We'll just say that. That as the renewals come up, that they will be renewed with a term to expire in 210 so that they can all be on the same cycle. That's the intent.
May help us out. John, if someone transfers a lease, would that be a time that we could also enact the 2010 expiration?
And that's what I was saying, for the, for the specific lots, I didn't give you a number that are on the school land. That's right. Okay.
So there is possibility even by 2010, those other two will come to the same cycle, so.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson. Second? I'll second that. Second by Commissioner Dory. Other discussion?
This does not confirm that the city will get out of.
Right, right.
Confirm or deny that. I don't want that to be, to be considered part of this right now.
The end result being that all these lots around the lake are going to be three years or five years?
And the school land.
School land.
Just the school.
Right.
Just north school.
North and south school land.
Right.
On ours now.
Just.
Because we own that.
If we chose not to turn that over to them, then we would just have a contract aligned with the school land commission. And then like this time, if they're raising it to 660, we're going to be eating that $60 now until their contracts get renewed. So that way, if there's a raise, we can automatically do that if we choose to keep them.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, we're clear?
Clear.
Call roll quickly.
Peterson?
Aye.
Dory? Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, number eight. Consider a resolution renaming Stonehenge Park to Glenn Collins Memorial Park and setting the hours of operation of the park. Staff?
I'll answer any questions that I might have.
What's up with the hours?
Well, the current wording is that it would be 30 minutes after dusk or after the sun goes down, and that is always open to interpretation and, you know, more aligning with, "I still have beers in the fridge, I would like to finish them first," or, "You know, the sun only went down two minutes ago, now you're kicking me out." So it would be a lot easier for not only my staff, but for the police who are now shutting, you know, closing the gates to say, "Nine o'clock, you have to be out." And, you know, because, and we're only talking about, you know, during the summer months anyway.
For that extended amount of time.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
All right. Have a motion?
That's our motion.
Motion by Commissioner Shran?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Other discussion? Read the title, please.
Resolution changing the name of Stonehenge Park to Glenn Collins Memorial Park, setting hours of the park to open.
Call roll, please.
Shran?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Mills? Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Dory? Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine. Consider a resolution amending hours at Isaac Walton Park at Shawnee Lake.
Ditto.
Yes.
Ditto.
Ditto.
Do we have a motion?
That was it. Ditto and ditto.
Ditto, ditto. Okay, motion by Commissioner Shran, second by Commissioner Stevens. Read the title, please.
Resolution amending the hours at Isaac Walton Park, opening the public, pending section one of resolution number 5957 as applies to Isaac Walton Park, establishing hours of parks open.
Call roll, please.
Shran?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number 10. Consider bids. A, remodeling old jail and office area of police department, including electrical award. Finally.
Good evening. I recommend, we only had one bid, and it did meet the specifications that we outlined, so I recommend that we accept this bid.
Okay. How soon can they start?
Well, we're waiting on the HVAC system. We already started on dispatch. That's all torn down, and it was a good time for them to work on the HVACs. As soon as they get done with that and they get out of the building, they'll free up the jail where they've been supplying or keeping all their supplies.
Okay. Kenny, we have a motion?
It's easy. Make a motion to approve.
How much are we approving?
Omega Construction Services, is that the one? 28H?
Yes, Omega Construction.
For the remodeling of the police department.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Young? Aye.
Dory? Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
I'm looking. 28H, okay. All right.
Mills? Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. B, South Gordon Cooper 12-inch water line installation opening. Have we talked about this before?
Yeah.
Oh, they're bidding.
Oh, they're hanging out there?
Nope.
They're trying to get a bid?
But this was, they don't have 42 bids.
Dang. How long's this line?
About 29 hundred feet.
Wow.
Oh, my goodness.
This is the bid opening for the 12-inch Gordon Cooper water line. It runs from the bridge south to Hartisty Road. The, we've talked about it before. It was authorized last year through the last year's budget, maybe in the year before. Money was budgeted for it at that time, but the previous utility director wanted to hold off on doing it and, and do other projects with the money, and I guess the money was never spent. Through their, through their operations, they weren't able to keep the money intact, and it still showed up as a line item, and we're rolling it, it's money over that's in the budget this year to this current fiscal year. So then we had got the word to go ahead and advertise the project for bid, which is what we did. We came in April, I believe, and got authorization from the commission to do that.
To go out for bids.
To go out for bids. And that's what we're doing now. We're opening the bid. And we received five bids. The first bid opened was from Jordan Contractors from Tecumseh, Oklahoma. Their bid was $329,766. The second bid opened was from Westchester Development Company from Shawnee, Oklahoma. Their bid was $303,111.41. Next bid was from Matthews Trenching Company from Oklahoma City. Their bid was $306,335. The fourth bid was from Young General Constructors out of Edmond, Oklahoma. Their bid was $288,740. And the last bid opened was from McKee Utility from Prague, Oklahoma, and their bid was And we would ask that this item just be deferred to allow staff time to look at the, review the bid tabulations, make sure everything is in order, of course, to get with the utility director and see if where the money is going to come from after, I guess, they just awarded an emergency bid tonight, so. No kidding. I move to defer.
Motion by Commissioner Shran?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Call roll, please.
Wait a minute. Do you have an engineer's estimate or know how much was rolled over?
Well, $188,000 is rolled over.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Call roll, please.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Shran?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Dory? Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, new business? Okay, new business? Okay, administrative reports? I know Don's got one. Chomping at the bit.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Don Lynchburg, Assistant Management Director. I apologize for appearing before you denied in my cities. Normally, you'll see me in my uniform. But we've been out today with preliminary damage assessment team from FEMA and the Small Business Administration looking at damages that occurred last week. Before we get into those details, I would just tell you also that we received notification last week of a presidential disaster declaration for the flooding that occurred in early May, and that relates to the damage to the infrastructure, the public sector damages that occurred in the county. And so we'll be doing work with tomorrow with the FEMA inspectors on the three sites that we had in the city of Shawnee that were affected by that. There was primarily road damage and drainage area damage, storm sewer, that kind of thing. So we'll be meeting tomorrow to start the process to get our reimbursement for those damages on that process. Getting back to last Tuesday, anywhere between 5.5 and 7 inches of rain fell in three hours, depending upon where you were in the community, based upon the reports that we've received. Really, a yeoman's effort by all the city employees to respond to those kinds of conditions. The street department, traffic control division, all the emergency service, police, fire, emergency management folks did a great job in trying to get out there, block off the areas that were underwater. We had to do some rescues in certain areas, and citizens cooperated with us by staying off the roads mostly during that time, and that helped a bunch with that. We sent in our community citizens emergency management team in the afternoon to look at the damaged areas and had some preliminary reports that evening of damage to structural areas that had water in them or some other damages caused by debris that was floating. So we had those preliminary numbers which opened up the avenue to request federal and state assistance for that. In the interim period, the voluntary organizations such as the Red Cross, the Salvation Army, the community organizations and churches have been working to take care of the immediate needs of the victims of the disaster and getting, helping those people with food, clothing and shelter and getting cleanup kits out into the areas that were affected and helping people that needed some temporary housing assistance for a couple of days while their houses dried out. We also had some utility damage, as you heard earlier, with sewer lines and a water line wash issue. Primarily, we've looked at taking care of the people needs first. And so that's why the preliminary damage assessment team was in today, looking at the areas that were impacted by that flood. Tell you that we set up a hotline and asked people within the county to call last week and report structural damage that they had. We wound up with 17 businesses that were affected. Three school districts that were affected, the Maude, the McCombs, the Tecumseh School District. Three structures in the McCloud area, one in the Prague area of the county, 26 in Tecumseh area, and 157 in the Shawnee area. That includes both inside-city limits and then outside and incorporated areas of the county. So we set about, as a result of those people calling in, and mapped out the heaviest-hit areas, and that's what the team has been looking at today. They're still out, as a matter of fact, this evening and will be until dark, looking at all those areas. And so when we get done here, I'll go back and join them with that. We expect to have those numbers back into the state tomorrow. That team will be going on to look at other parts of the state that have been affected, and all those numbers will be rolled up and sent to Washington by the end of the week so we can look at the possibility of presidential or some sort of federal declaration on that. I would say that anybody that didn't get the chance to call our hotline and register last week does not need to worry because we were just trying to get the representative sample of the damage that occurred so that we could put the numbers together that the team could look at today, go back, and then the decision could be made based upon that. So they haven't lost out on any window of opportunity for assistance if they didn't call our number. What they will need to do in the meantime, as we go through this process, as they begin cleaning up their homes and their businesses that were damaged, is to keep good records of what was damaged, of course. Pictures are helpful. Lists of supplies or costs for your cleanup are important to have so that inspector has that documentation if we do get a declaration to look at. So we encourage people to do that. If we do receive a declaration, then there will probably be a facility opened here for a period of time where people can go in place and register. I suspect there would also be a tele-registration number established. When that occurs, we will publicize that through our local media, newspapers, radio and TV. Having the list of people that called in and identified as having damage and got an address, we'll also mail them a flyer, and we'll put up flyers around the community to try to get the word out as much as possible. We'll also use Channel 30 to continue to air that information so people can pick that up off of Channel 30 if they so desire. So that's the process of taking care of sort of the people, instance. We'll know a little bit more, as I said, hopefully by the end of the week or early next week, as to how that occurs. Again, a lot of damage in other parts of the state that will help add to those numbers, undoubtedly, and will be taken into consideration when that request goes up to Washington, DC. In terms of the public sector assistance that we might receive, we have turned in the numbers of the damages that we knew happened in Shawnee. We had one road that had some asphalt that buckled as a result of rushing water and then the utility damage that's occurred. The county has received considerable road and bridge damage as a result of this, and their county commissioners are still working to crunch those numbers. We'll be turning those in and hopefully receive a preliminary damage assessment team later this week to look at that sector, the public sector. And we'll know where we stand a little bit more with that as well. So we'll keep you up to date on that. But again, I just want to encourage the folks that are, have had disaster damage in their home to make sure they've contacted their insurance agent, obviously, if they haven't. And if they need any other unmet needs that there might be for immediate assistance, to contact the Red Cross or contact our office, and we'll get them in touch with the Red Cross and to stand by and watch for news of that emergency declaration and then to call and register and get that registration number when we do receive that. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I was gonna say that Congresswoman Mary Fallon was very complimentary of Don and Melvin Potter and the emergency service providers that the Red Cross and Salvation Army churches for taking care of people that were misplaced out of their homes. And she's very complimentary that we were proactive and also considering the fact that we found flooding where there was no flooding before, as some people have known personally now. And that as we develop and grow as a community, that we're going to be proactive in dealing with that stormwater removal through our community. So it was good to hear that, and she's gonna help us where she can. City of Tecumseh was here as well, you know, and she's stepped up and gonna try to push through the efforts with the rest of our delegation, with President Bush, to make sure that money gets here as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much.
Other staff?
There was a special work session that was originally scheduled for June 25th, and it's changed to July 23rd regarding building and fire codes. That will be changed again to July 30th.
Okay. Follow the moving date. Okay, any other administrative reports? Commissioners' comments? We've got the IFYR rodeo starting Monday, so hope that everybody will go out and celebrate the 15th anniversary of the IFYR rodeo here in Shawnee. It also is a designated Oklahoma Centennial event, and I understand the governor will be here Monday to help celebrate the volunteers that have made this all possible. It's absolutely impossible for us to have done this without the hundreds of volunteers and the thousands of man-hours that have been donated to this great event. So hope that everybody shows up and enjoys the people that will come and bring their tourism dollars to the city of Shawnee. Don't forget also, next Tuesday, we have the 60th anniversary event at the Hornbeck, and I guess we're gonna have this movie of some local celebrities that were kids, about 11 years old at that time. So that'll be really interesting, a little 20-minute film, I suppose. So that'll be fun, at 7 o'clock, Tuesday night. So other comments?
We've got that red, white and blue celebration.
Oh, yeah.
Wednesday night. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the one coming right up.
I almost forgot that. It's my anniversary, too. I forgot that. I didn't forget that. Hear me out there.
Hey, for you home builders, we did decide tonight to do a rebate. So if you wrote the check, you qualify for rebate. How soon will that go into effect? Is that... Okay, within the next four weeks, so it is not immediately, do not show up tomorrow. Lake hours will be posted and renaming of the park. Glenn Collins Memorial Park is the new name of Stonehenge Park. Also on Penny Street, for those folks entering, what's the name of the Bison Edition out there in Smoking Oaks, look for a speed sign. Please obey the speed limit signs across the city, across the way. And watch out for the children who are out playing. The sun's gonna be coming out sometime soon, and we need to be very conscious of those children playing in the streets.
Motion to adjourn, then?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Young?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doherty. Call roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Open up the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, July 2nd, 2007. We have a quorum. Consider approval of consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Sharon?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doherty. Discussion? Call roll, please.
Sharon?
Don?
Stevens?
Mills?
Young?
Peterson?
Motion carries, thank you. Administrative reports? Tony? I know you're not used to this. New business? Just say name. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Young?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doherty. Call roll, please.
Young?
Don?
Stevens?
Sharon?
Don?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Open up the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, July 2nd, 2007. We have a quorum and consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Young?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Peterson. Call roll, please.
Young?